Nancy Kapka.
Present.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Sherrell Fuller.
Sherrell.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Cavanado.
Here.
Don Renner.
I'm running this up here.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll start tonight with an approval of the minutes from the December 17th. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like, go ahead. I'm here. Do we have to announce?
We already did.
We just did.
I thought we did. You gave me this look like I forgot something.
No, I was just being attentive.
Nancy's not used to people listening.
Yeah, not used to people listening to me. Okay, we need a motion for the approval of the minutes, December 17th business meeting, December 17th 2018 closed meeting, and January 14th 2019 special workshop meeting.
So moved.
Terry moves.
Seconded.
Dan seconds.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Cavanado.
I'll pass because I wasn't here on the 14th.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller. And Nancy Kapka.
Passed because I wasn't here on the 14th either. But we still have, we still carried. Okay, this will be the first reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Does there anybody wish to address the board?
That's good. I can see it.
Okay. Hearing.
In light of the weather, do you want to just take any at this point?
That is an excellent point. In light of the weather, if you're going to here to address the board about anything, whether it's go ahead, unless you really want to stay for the entire meeting, which you're welcome to do.
Just the microphone. Right there. No, it's all right. It's all right.
And you're going to have to state your name and spell it, please, and do realize that this is being recorded.
Oh, that's cool.
Our students are so shy.
Yeah, yeah, shy. I'm Luke Rankin. Sorry, I wrote this down here.
Oh, take your time.
I'm Luke Rankin, a student at North High School. Sorry, it's scrolling up. And yeah, I'm Luke Rankin, a student at North High School.
Luke, can you spell your last name for us, please? And is L-U-K-E is your first name?
L-U-K-E, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I actually, I'm campaigning for shorter school days. So did you know that we have one of the longest school days in the state? Our school day runs from 8 until 3:20 every day, resulting in a seven and a half hour school day, not including commute. The average school day is noticeably short than ours, shorter than ours, at just about six and a half hours. And contrary to what one might think, the students aren't the only ones who suffer from this tediously long school day. Teachers at North often come in early and stay late to assist struggling students and miss their test retakes. These additional commitments can add around two hours to their already lengthy workday. The average American's work week, oh, let me say workday, is just over eight hours. The teachers and students have to stay late and stress about their long day. For what benefit? One could assume that longer school days means more quantity of education, which would probably mean much more quality of education. I mean, sure, school days would be ridiculous. Look at Finland. Their school goes 600 hours in a year, 500 hours shorter than national American average, and 600 hours shorter than us. They must be doing horribly. And this I will refute. As Finland is one of the smartest countries in the world, Finland actually performs better, way better, than America on their PISA, also known as the Program for International Student Assessment. On science literacy, they average 35 points higher than us, reading 29 points, and mathematics 41 points higher for a country that goes to school for half the time we do. Students in high performing countries like South Korea, Finland, and Japan actually spend less time in school than most US students. Besides, teenagers need more sleep. According to Nationwide Children's Hospital, the average teen, the average sleep that teenagers get is between seven and seven and a quarter hours. However, they need between nine and nine and a half hours. If we get an extra hour to sleep, then we would probably do better in school, get better grades, improve scores on standardized testing and SATs. Right now, teenagers just don't have enough to sleep to reach their full potential. According to National Sleep Foundation's website, the roots of the problem include poor team's sleep habits that do not allow for enough hours of quality sleep. Hectic schedules with after-school activities and jobs, homework hours and family vacations, and class between societal demands, such as early school start times, biological change that put most teens on a later sleep-wake clock. As a result, when it's time to wake up for school, the adolescent's body says that it is the middle of the night and he or she has had too little sleep to feel rested and alert. The consequences of sleep deprivation during teenage years are particularly serious. Teens spend a great portion of each day in school. However, they are unable to maximize the learning opportunities afforded by the education system. Since sleep deprivation impairs their ability to be alert, pay attention, solve problems, cope with stress, and retain information. Young people who do not get enough sleep at night carry a significant risk for drowsy driving, emotional and behavioral problems such as irritability, depression, poor impulse control and violence, health complaints, tobacco and alcohol use, impaired cognitive function and decision-making, and lower overall performance in everything, from academics to athletics. If we cut the length of passing periods by a minute and not lunch periods by five, we'd have an actual 32 minutes of spare, which would just about make up for the 50 minutes they would stay longer each day, which would allow us to have more time to sleep and therefore perform better in school. There's also other plans that people have been working, I have friends who like talk about other ideas, get shown it too. Longer school days would be beneficial, of course, if students worked just as hard in those 15 minutes as they did during other parts of the day. But first periods, teachers contest. During the first hour of school, students are drowsy, tired, and unable to work properly. I'm sure a few teachers in the past, you've heard them say the phrase, say that students have said the phrase in first period, "Oh, I'm still asleep," and talking about how tired they are. Of course, one might mention how this would affect late start. And I have a simple solution. Just get rid of it. Late start is a temporary solution to a long-term problem that would be fixed with shorter school days. The truth is, if we fix our schedules, we'd be on par with the national average time, would have increased competence and decreased drowsiness. Of course, you might say, you may say, "This is nothing. The American work week is eight hours. Students are just doing their dues." Personally, I don't think high schoolers are formally formed adults yet, but let's go with it. We should have the workload that you have, but let's go with it. This would be true, except for that most students' days go even longer than this. The bus arrives for most students the very latest of 7:20. That's a solid 40 minutes before school arrives. But that's not all. People have to get to the stop earlier and then that, and like in case it comes earlier. So really, best case scenario, leaving the house 7:10. Bus usually arrives at the stop the very earliest. Like the stop, like home, it arrives the earliest, 3:45. Over the course, you have to walk home, which depending on location can take up like to five minutes. But if we're pretending that you live next to a bus stop, your day goes from 7:10 to 3:45. That's eight hours, 35 minutes. Of course, this is even including after-school activities or early bird. Let's start off with something very American. Football, a commonplace afternoon activity for boys would go to 6:15. With commute, you'd probably get home at 6:25. Let's think about that for a moment. That kid wasn't able to be home for 11 hours and 15 minutes. Why you understand that sentence? This kid spent almost half the day at school. With that schedule, it's almost impossible to get enough sleep and eat dinner and breakfast, let alone do homework. As a result, kids are stressed and unhappy because they don't have much time to unwind. And who could blame them? That school day I described is not even with early bird. With early bird, the school day would be even longer. You want better education. I understand that. I get that. I love to learn and improve myself. But most students don't think of it that way. They just see another 15 minutes, stuck to a chair, doing a test, and don't care to participate. This, of course, lowers their grades. Another important effect of this is that you can't be learning. Is that like, when you can't, like when you can't be learning, you know, you're not learning. When kids are tired or bored, they're not paying attention. So they're not learning. How do we change this? How do we get these kids more engaged, gain them more paying attention? The solution is simple. What we need is more quality education, not more quantity. Students focus more when they're required to do so for a short time. Imagine I ask you to read me a newspaper and tell me the key details about it. You'd probably do really well and remember all the important details. Now imagine I told you to do that but for 100 newspapers. You would likely have a harder time focusing and remembering after the first 20 newspapers. By the time you got to like the 60th newspaper, I imagine you'd probably stop caring. It's not like all the newspapers aren't important. They are. The thing is, though, when you try to remember 100 instead of a few, you don't end up remembering any at all. Typical argument I would get against this method of thinking I have is that we're simply better. What I mean by this is that, sure, the national average is shorter than us, but we are just better than the national school. The national average school is probably brought down by the poor urban areas that can't afford to keep the school open all day. The argument that is pushed is that we are in a different and richer area. And we need to adjust for that we are in a different area. And if we lower the school day, we'd be below par for our area. But that is wrong. Our school day is 20 minutes longer than Hinsdale Central, Hinsdale South, Glen Bardees, and Willowbrook is shorter than us. And the students agreed. In just a week, I got over 500 signatures to my petition right here for shorter school days.
Hey, Luke.
Yeah.
It seems like you've got a lot left to go.
Oh, yeah.
And it seems like you haven't written out. Would you be willing to?
Actually, it's like the last paragraph.
Okay. Can you send it to me? And I'll forward, I'll let you finish in a second. But can you send that to me so I can forward your notes onto the board? And can you make a copy of your petition and send that to me as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I can take a look at it. And then, once you finish up, reach out to me with that and we'll set up a time to get together and talk about this.
Awesome sauce, yeah.
Go ahead. Close out.
Okay. I campaigned at our school for a total of five days. I got 500 to sign these. That's 20% of the student population of North in a week. That's a lot. I haven't even asked my people yet. It's gotten to the point where so many people know they don't even need to explain before I ask it. They just know what it is and sign it. I think all it takes is one citizen to change the world. All it takes is one citizen to change the world. And what's a couple minutes off of every period for a better education? So please, on behalf of the Downers Grove Student Body, 500 people behind me already, I ask you to make a change for the better, slightly shorter the school days for the better.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Luke. I commend you on your diligence. Please make an appointment with Dr. Thiele. And I personally would ask that you share not only your memo and your petition with the board, but I'd be interested in where you pull your numbers for six and a half hours? Your sources, please?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, I have sources right here.
Well, you can just send them.
Just send your document over and I'll get it to the board, okay?
Awesome.
Good for you.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Drive safely.
Thanks for coming out.
My school goes six and a half. So I can validate. My school goes six and a half.
Well, a lot of schools do.
Six hours and 27 minutes.
Remember, there's an average in there, so median, and it'll go into that. So that was our reception of visitors. We now have the recommendations and reports of the superintendent.
This is our finance show this evening, starring Mark Stalen, starting with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or otherwise known as CAFR.
Well, just, I'm going to introduce John Epperson. He's the partner in charge of the engagement. He helps us with the compilation of the CAFR in addition to the auditing services they provide. And this is our 20th submission. We've had 19 successful submissions for a Certificate of Excellence, and so they do a great job helping us. So I'll let John address you now.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm not going to go over these financials in great detail. You guys have had it for some time. If you wanted to ask some questions at the end, feel free. But I did want to address, there are a couple of letters that also came with the financial statements. One letter is referred to as like just a required communication letter to the board, and that just tells you sort of how we developed our audit, sort of what accounting principles that were required to audit them under. If there's difficulties with management, what uncorrected misstatements are, whether there are significant estimates, and what future accounting pronouncements might have an impact on the district overall. The next one that we have is referred to as our management letter, sometimes as a controlled efficiency letter. And this basically is a communication of matters of best practices and for value-added recommendations for changes. There's a couple of items here. Nothing that is considered material weakness or a significant deficiency. More matters of general communication. One related to some grant expenditures. No issues overall with how the grant was expended. It was just a quarterly submission that was submitted for a little bit more than what we actually got. Or, I'm sorry, we got more than we should have in that, but it corrected itself at the year-end submission. And then some, one of the comments that we had for, just as a recommendation, we saw that some sales taxes were paid on some procurement card and some board reimbursements. Obviously, the district's tax exempt, so trying to get you every effort to not have to pay those taxes if you don't have to. And the other one relates to, and this is something that goes out to all of our clients, related to technology risk these days. There's so many phishing scams out there that could really compromise systems, and we've seen it at a lot of our clients. Some of our more sophisticated for-profit clients have been affected, have actually suffered financial losses from that. So we just want to bring it to everybody's attention. It's a different world we live in, you know, and just to always keep up on your IT policies and everything like that. Now on to the financials themselves. The report's not much different than it has been in the past couple of years. There was a new accounting pronouncement in the current year, though, that maybe you are aware of. It's called GASB-75. It's related to other post-employment benefits. And it changed your government-wide financial statements, how they present certain things. The other post-employment benefits offered through THIS and through your retiree healthcare plan, those liabilities used to be footnote disclosures only, and they're now on the financial statements on the statement of net position. It actually led to, we had to do a retrospective restatement of the opening balances. So you'll see where you used to have an overall net position. It took the district, just those full accrual statements, to a net deficit because of $70 million of other post-employment benefit liabilities that were put on the books. All it is, it's really an allocation. Everybody's in one big pool, and you're allocated a portion of that. Similar to the pensions, it's really no different than the pensions. There was a delay, though, in receiving that report. Actually, the report was issued by the state, and we were one of the firms that helped determine that it was wrong. And they went through and they reissued the report finally in November, which led to a little bit later of the financial statement finalization date than in prior years. The other thing this new pronouncement did was it added about 14, 13 pages more notes to it. So of course, you know, more reading for you to do. And that's just more on how those amounts are determined via an actuary. It's really an estimate, that sort of thing. We issued a clean opinion on the financial statements, was referred to as an unmodified opinion, which means that the district's financials were fairly stated in all material respects. That being said, I don't know if you guys had any other questions. I wasn't going to go into all of the numbers of it all.
Sounds like none. Thank you very much.
Great. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Drive safe.
Yes, safe drive.
Quarterly financial report.
Okay, so I'm going to run it through here. The fund balances in this case are key thing here down the lower right-hand corner. $575,000 lower this point in time compared to last year. And there's several things that contribute to that. Part of it are just some deferred or delayed payments from the state, which we've encountered quite a bit in the past. But there's also some prorations of state money that we were not anticipating. In fact, the state went the wrong direction with this. They made up for some ground last year on some of these areas, and then they fell backwards again this year. And so I want to just, and when we get into revenues, I'm going to talk to you about that. In fact, let's just go right to it. So if we look at the revenues collected, overall, 90% of budget on the current fiscal year versus 93% on the last year, roughly the same. But there's a couple unusual items. One is our taxes are a little bit, they're not over 100%, which last year they were more than 100% collected. They're actually under a little bit at this time. And the county treasurer is holding some dollars off because we've had a higher number of appeals. And typically, we do really well with appeals. Our township assessors take a look at most of them to see if they're valid appeals that they make, and they usually will settle those before they go to a higher level. But we'll see, you know, typically what happens is we win these appeals at the board review level, and then they transfer their money to us later. So I'm not too concerned about that, but that's one thing that helped contribute to a lower fund balance at the end of the year. Replacement taxes was one of these where it was not just a proration or a deferred payment. They actually did swap some of the money from the replacement tax pot at the state level and put it into their own pot to pay for regular expenses of the state, of operating the state. So it was a reduction which affects us by about 10%, which is about $95,000. So it's one of the pieces that we anticipated them coming up. Last year, if you look at, we had $797,000 budgeted. And by the end of the year, we overcollected that because they actually didn't take anything out of the pot. This year, they decided to do it, which was a big surprise because really those have always been earmarked funds that are collected on our behalf, and they just prorated it out of there, so.
So can we contest that, or?
Well, it's statewide. I don't know. I don't know that, I think what's, I know that our alliance has noticed it and is looking towards it and doing, I don't know if they're going to take action. I think they were looking at the legality and said it is legal for them to do that. But it's, I'll go into it a little bit later about how that affects us when we wrap them all up. The other thing is the state aid for mandated, a couple mandated programs. There's two programs in particular, special ed tuition, and there's also
Transportation.
Special ed transportation. And these costs usually go up higher than cost of living. And for them to actually reduce these and prorate these further, it's pretty bad. We had some really high costs last year, and so the impact of these two are about $385,000. We combine that with the replacement taxes, it's about $480,000 that we are pretty sure we're going to fall short of budget in those areas. And so what that compels us to do is look at the expenditures and see if we can trim that or look at other revenues. One other item here, the interest is a little bit low. It's lower than it was last year, yet our budget is much higher. It's only because we've invested in longer-term investments, and they don't pay the interest until it matures. We feel pretty comfortable looking at what we have invested that we're going to make our higher interest. And if you look at, it's more than double interest, and it's because the small changes in interest right now are big changes to us. So that's another timing difference in this whole thing. So if we look at this graph, this is just kind of me trying to make the case that we've gone to a new funding formula, which is evidence-based formula, which we are in what they call hold harmless mode, where they're going to give us at least the same amount each year, which, the impact of that is, I want to put this graph together to show back in 2008, what a dollar would, something that costs a dollar on the top row is going to cost $1.20 now, just using the CPI U factors every year, cost of living and compounding those over each year. And the more dramatic, I think, way to show it, because these are really saying the same thing, but it's just doing it a different way. If we had 100 buses, which between District 58, 68, and 99, we have about 100 buses, we had enough funding to pay for those 100 buses, and it's a dollar. So that works out well. The year two, 2009, we only had enough money to buy 97 if they gave us the same amount, if they hold harmless and give us the same funding. And if you look at the end, you know, we're a 10-year period. Now we only have enough money to buy 84 buses. And that's like, I try and explain that to legislators, that you know, giving us the same dollars amount each year doesn't really give us the same buying power. And it forces us to go in to make cuts in the budget, add fees to our parents, or just raise our taxes as much as we can, and that's why we have to do that. So I wanted to just point that out with this graph. Is it, inflation does exist. We actually do contribute to it. I understand that. But the whole state does, and the whole nation does. So it's a reality that, for some reason, seems like Springfield doesn't believe it, or at least doesn't live by those rules.
Well, that doesn't even factor in the proration of other things like special ed transportation tuition, so that number is being driven down more dramatically by those kinds.
Right, and if you think about it, the areas that, where we have to see the highest inflation is actually in special ed costs. Tuition, because tuition often involves medical issues, but just tuition just keeps growing. And it's actually, unless you have a reduction in the number of individuals being outplaced, which we have increases the last couple of years, your, our spend is greater than inflation. The increase in our spend is greater than inflation. For those, to take those two areas to hit, it was very difficult to see that. So on the expenditure side, though, this is looking pretty good. Overall, 46% compared to 47%, pretty much flowing the way we expect it to. The one item that is a positive thing here, it's on the bottom here, it's highlighted. You see, we raised our budget almost by 600,000 or so for tuition. But it looks like our, by doing the mid-year account of kids enrolled, if you look at the red, I see a look on your face, I'm not sure if you're following, Nancy, but the 4.7 million to 5.3 million on the budget side for those accounts. And we are spending more, but we're not going to, we don't think we're going to spend as much as we increase the budget for, we look at the current enrollments, and if they hold up the way they are now, we'll actually probably get about 250,000 back on that line item. So that helps us offset the $480,000 on the revenue side. And it's a pretty manageable number for us to go into the budget and try and find a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're going to work hard at that. Some of the tech, you know, we did a tech internet, where some of that was purposely being delayed, I think, until the next summer, so we'll be able to maybe hold back some of those dollars. So usually, capital outlay is what we would look at, especially with the master facility plan in such full swing right now, starting up. This should take a little bit of burden off of our capital outlay. And that's, I'm sorry.
I was going to say question, I had a question when you're done, I'm sorry.
So that's it in a nutshell. I think we look like we're on track. There's a couple of things we're having to deal with, disappointments, but we have a positive thing here on the expenditure side that we're holding on to, too.
So I have two questions, I don't know if anybody else has questions. I'll go. So I thought we were keeping more special ed.
Pardon?
I thought we were keeping more kids in special ed in-house.
We are, but there was a huge number coming at us, and actually Lisa presented, I think, saying how she was saving dollars, but it was kids that are already outplaced.
Okay.
And so she was able to pull back on the number of kids currently in, or were in, outplaced in the sender districts, and show them that we have programming in district, which is just as good, and it keeps them in district and closer to home, which is many parents approve, you know, like that. Some don't care, and they want the outplacement, but, and sometimes it's, most, I think, the outplacements are valid. I mean, there's, but we did have a larger number, and we have a large number coming at us for next year as well, so, bigger than the average. So it's, we're
That budget line would have been much higher had Lisa not made those adjustments.
Yeah. It's good to have her there to concentrate just on that piece of it.
So do we think this is going to carry through, and next year, when you said that we're getting more students, we're going to have to
It could be
More money in our budget?
It could, because, you know, it's very hard to predict what the proration will be, and it depends on what kind of pushback the state gets on prorating these for all the schools this year. So, you know, we never know exactly where they're going to end up, and the state hasn't solved their problem yet. It'll be interesting to see with the new governor, what changes they, he is very much pro-education, so I think, hopefully, they can, you know, try and protect us a little bit more.
And then for tuition, let me understand, so we're, our actual is less because we have not had the numbers of students we anticipated?
Our actual of 3.2 million
Yeah.
Is more than it was last year, but it's not as much
As we had anticipated.
As we anticipated.
So does that impact our staffing, or?
No, because that's outplacement.
Oh, this is all outplacement?
That's what we're paying to other
It's all dollars.
Other schools or
Those are special ed tuition dollars.
Sorry, I'm, okay.
It also includes folk ed tuition, so GCD is also in that number. But it's special needs students that are outplaced.
Sorry, thank you.
And it's a mandated category, it's something we have to do, we're bound to do it. It's not something we can just turn the valve off and say we're not going to provide those services.
Yeah, and I think not only are we below what we were budgeted, we have a few students that are aging out mid-year here that will help us drive those costs down. So that one's trending in the right direction, Elise.
Thank you. Anybody else?
We're still, you know, we've budgeted a surplus of about 2.5 million, so we're still, I mean, we're still in the black, even though
Well, we budgeted to have a fund balance at the end, but of total operating funds, I think we were balanced, we didn't have a surplus budgeted.
Didn't we budget 92.7 in revenues and
Well, we, what's not in here are transfers to the debt service fund.
Okay.
So the transfers, in fact, we'll talk about it with the abatement in a few minutes, but that's technically not an expenditure, and it's always scheduled, so there's no variation from budget on that. So we know exactly what we'll be paying out for that. You're at good, I mean, I probably should include that, so you can see it, but it balances out to zero, net zero, with, when you add those in.
Yep, so we're going to work to try to make sure we pull that in at zero or better, even with the state adjusting this.
Some athletic fees?
So we'll go right to the next proposed summer camp fee increase. This is the current schedule, it's in the memo. It's to increase it by $15 per category. So what we, contact hours now, if a student has 0 to 19 hours, and I have another little slide to show that. Currently, we're charging a fee of $55, we're proposing a fee of 70. We looked at 24 different comparisons of different schools in the area, and we will still be right in line with those and way under on some of these. And the athletic directors actually next year would like to look at a different approach to this, and with more, because there's a lot of variation, there's not always the same ratio of kids to coaches, and this is what they proposed, I think it was different than athletic directors that originally proposed this, and they're living with it over the last four years. They'd like to do a more thorough study next year and just change the process overall. But again, next year, there's some, they're thinking more, there'll be more disruption of their programs in summer camp anyways. But this year, they'd like to just get it to where they have enough dollars to pay the coaches when they don't have a lot of number, a lot of kids, and the ratio is pretty low for those camps. So the way that, really, just real quickly, the way it works is, fees are set based on the total number of hours for each camp. So if you have a two-hour-a-day camp, four days a week for eight weeks, that's two times four times two, that's 16 contact hours, and that would fall into that first category between 0 and 19 for $55 a participant. So it's still a pretty good value for the kids, and it's pretty close, in fact, to what the Park District does for their programming. So, and we have, generally, we have certified teachers usually that are coaching these kids, and we think we have some, you know, some good advantages to those other programs. So there's an action item to ask you to increase it by $15 for each program, for each camp.
Any questions? Okay, moving on, we'll go to 5D. The next item of business before the Board of Education is a consideration of a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2018 to pay debt service on the general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2001 of the district.
And this is the abatement for the revenue bonds. This is one of those transfers, I think this one is just under 1.3 million, I think it's 1.28 of debt service that we're handling through our operating funds, and you made a good point there, that it's coming out of the same operating funds as all of our other expenses rather than increasing taxes. We did not levy taxes for these. If the board, not the board, if the state board were to remove our state aid, or really cut the replacement taxes down to a point where we couldn't pay this debt service, then we would have the authority to issue bonds, and actually, or, I'm sorry, issue a levy, levy for this, and pay for it with that levy. But that's very, very unlikely that that's going to happen. So we just budget for it each year. But we need to abate it, or the county clerk will issue the taxes, which we don't want him to do.
We are, we are receiving, we think we are going to be receiving less than the replacement taxes, though, this year.
Yeah, but only by about $95,000, and we get enough in general state aid, especially with the evidence-based formula, the way it is now, where they've lumped in other mandated categoricals other than the ones that they trimmed. They lumped more into it, so we clearly receive enough in state aid that would cover this. And that's the first, what our resolution said when we issued those bonds is that the first dollars we would have in state aid would be allocated to this, you have to think of it in those terms. So as long as we could cover it with that state aid, we don't have authority to reduce it, you know, to say that it's not adequate to cover the debt service and to issue the tax.
Well, we've been doing this every year since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
Since 2011. It's a good, it's a good thing for our taxpayers, and it's only possible because of great fiscal management, and, you know, because we have the authority to issue these bonds if we, if we need to. And, you know, looking at your graph
Yeah. Hopefully, that day never comes, that we have
Right.
We can, you know, exercise that, but
Any other questions or comments? Will we be voting on that later?
Yeah.
Master facility plan progress?
Just a quick update on this. I had mentioned to the board several times that there'd be a third-party commissioning service, that's the third, the second set of eyes to come in and look at all aspects of the project, from construction to electrical, to plumbing, to all, heating and air commission, all of that stuff. So just informing the board that we received several proposals, and B and F Construction Code Services will be providing a team of trained individuals, highly qualified individuals, to come through and inspect all aspects of the building project. This is also a requirement through the DuPage ROE, the Regional Office of Education, so we meet that compliance piece as well.
Well, and this is the, was a critical piece for me in really hiring White as a construction manager, knowing that we had both, you know, architect and construction manager under the same roof. Having this independent set of eyes to help Jim is important, and it's great that it's 41,000 under budget.
Yeah, we're, yeah, 41,000 under budget on this.
So Jim, is Jim familiar with them? He's looked, he's looked through their credentials?
He's very comfortable with them.
He's very comfortable with them?
Yes, yeah.
That's good enough for me.
Yep, so this provides that extra level of verification that we were looking for.
Anything else? Freedom of information requests?
We received five of them and responded to them this week, and I will point out that Julie has spent some time over the last few months putting together a FOIA requests received page, which is linked in board docs, which we're just going, FOIAs are public documents anyway, so it provides some transparency to the public of who is issuing FOIA requests and what we're responding to them for. And that way, if somebody also has a similar request, they can just go pull those documents rather than making the request again, and then staff time having to be dedicated to it. All around, it provides, as I said, a lot more transparency and some efficiencies as well, and I thank Julie for pulling all that together.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Do we track how much time we spend on FOIA requests?
No, that would take too much time.
And to what end?
We have a plan, okay. Is, okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, is there any item that any member of the board would like to move? Okay, so we need
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented, the personnel report for appointment, personnel report retirement, financial pages, closed session meetings, and verbatim recordings, approval of non-resident tuition costs, and approval of student tours.
I'll second.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the consent agenda passes, we're moving on to recommendation for action, approval of the comprehensive annual financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Don and Mike. Thank you. Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Thank you. Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're going to move on to the abatement resolution, the alternate revenue bonds.
So moved.
Wait, 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 this is the resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2018 to pay debt service on general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2011 of Community High School District 99, DuPage County, Illinois.
Now I so moved.
Thank you, so
All right, so second.
Thank you, and thank you. Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, the motion is carried and said resolution adopted, please record that in the board of, the board records, please. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Nyad. Approval of the 2019 summer athletic camp fees?
I move that we accept the $15, $15
Increase in
Increase in fees for the summer athletic program, or camps, excuse me.
Second.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, motion carries. Will the antenue business policy committee first reading?
Policy committee met this week and discussed these. Not a lot of significant things in here, I think board members only had like three procedural questions in there. So take a look, we come back next month with these. Although, one of the things that we committed to doing was, we have that list that we put together last year at the board's request of board policies that are not inside of the press cycle, press cycle of rotations. So before the election cycle and maybe a board changes, or policy committee changes, we're going to make sure that we take a look at all of those, make sure that we're not recommending any changes in those, so that as we head out of this cycle, those have all been reviewed. And then we're going to take a look at those every other year to make sure we're not falling behind, unless, except for two, we've decided to look at frequently every year, which are like technology policies, because those can change, that's websites and those kinds of things, and fundraising policy, just to make sure that that, we're on the same page for that. So if you have any question, so those will come up later in the year, that we reviewed them, but before April.
I was curious about the change from substitute teachers to the word guest teacher.
Yeah.
You want to
It's an attempt to try to make, bring a little more respect to that position in hopes of perhaps hiring a larger pool of candidates.
Has that held us back?
No, we're doing okay. Pete's doing a really nice job of hiring subs and keeping our pool large. One of the changes that he made in the last year was those video interviews that we've talked about with the board in the past, and that has allowed Pete to interview a lot of candidates very quickly, because they submit a video interview, and from there, you know, he can kind of separate those that he's interested in from those that were not very quickly, and then kind of build that pool of subs as well. So we're doing okay.
The Senate might see this as sort of a PC sort of thing, but I see it as, as a way of showing the rest of the world that maybe we think a little higher of those positions than might otherwise happen. It's a way to communicate
Yes.
Our feelings about, about them. So, interesting, I thought you might want to highlight it, so.
All right, so if you have any questions, Dan, Rick, or I, over the next month, and these will come back for approval next month.
Okay. We've already had our reception of visitors, was there anybody else who wanted to address the board? Hearing done, we'll move on to the communication announcements. Len?
We did meet last Friday, and there was a panel of new legislators who serve our respective districts in DuPage County. It's more just to sort of meet and greet, had an opportunity to ask some safe questions, nothing too challenging. Not a lot of takeaways from, from the meeting, other than a lot of those legislators do have relative experience in education, which is a really good thing. As Hank and I discussed, it was a panel of women.
Oh.
It wasn't one white male on the panel, which was refreshing. And it was just, it was a good time, but not a, not any real takeaway from the meeting at this point. You know, we are tracking the proposed legislation on the length of the school day, and I think Len's position at this point is still in opposition to those changes, and we'll monitor that legislation as it moves forward. Anything else? Hank?
We expect in the next couple of weeks to hear who the new state superintendent will be. It's very clear that it will not be Tony Smith, which is, I think, from a lot of superintendents' positions, unfortunate. You know, it's a very political position, but Tony has served the state of Illinois, I believe, well in his tenure there, and has represented superintendents well. One of the things that's nice that he has done is set up a superintendent's hotline, that only superintendents have the secret bat phone number. But what's been very interesting that he has set up is that it is manned all the time, and it is by his cabinet, so that his cabinet is well aware of all the issues that are going on across the state, and anything that comes into there becomes an action item for his team, because he figures if somebody's asking it, other people have the same question. So I would hope that anybody else who comes into that role is supportive and proactive in dealing with issues, as he has been.
Very good. Moving on to the School Association for Special Education in DuPage County, two things I wanted to bring up. Our SEACID rates will be going up, because they, of course, are experiencing the same thing we're experiencing, so they have to come. And last time, I couldn't think of the new executive director's name, it is Dr. Melinda McGuffin, and she is a North grad, by the way. District 99 Education Foundation.
Yeah, we're, you know, Pizza Wars is coming up, February 28th, so be sure and buy your tickets, they're on sale now on their website, www.pizzawars.org, and they're $10 in advance and $15 at the door. And we're also looking for potential sponsors from community members and business interests. So if you know of anybody who would like to be a sponsor of Pizza Wars, you can contact Maura Bates at pizzawars99ef@gmail.com. Okay, so I hope to see you all at Pizza Wars. We've got 10 pizza restaurants, so come hungry.
Will do.
Always. Illinois Association of School Boards, Mike, anything?
Just, we have our spring meeting coming up, I forgot the date, Julie?
I think it's the 9th, isn't it?
It's March 9th.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
March 9th.
Nice to be thinking about March.
Yeah, maybe the weather will be different.
It's, right, so
This prey comes in like a lion, so it goes out like a lion.
No, it's not March 9th, because that's a Saturday.
12th?
It's
6th.
6th, that's Ash Wednesday.
All right.
So, yeah, so let Julie know if you want to go.
Okay.
I'm signed up.
And Mike, Nancy, and I are all going to the Alliance meeting in Springfield to meet with legislators and see what we can do around moving some agenda items forward there.
I think that's it, upcoming, anything else? No. Upcoming board meetings, we are not going to have a meeting on February 4th. There's a conflict, it's something that several of our members want to attend within the, within Downers Grove, and we will be moving all of those items to the, none of those items have to be met on their day, so those are all moved to another calendar. So we will meet on February 25th, the regular business meeting will be at 6:30 PM here in the ASC. And now we need a motion to go into closed session?
I move we go into closed session.
For?
The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and litigation when in action against, affecting, or on behalf of the district or on behalf of the district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed